Welcome to the East Bridgewater School Committee meeting of February 14th, 2019. At this time, I would take a motion to open the meeting.
So moved?
Moved by Gordon, second by Rob. All in favor?
Aye.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Happy Valentine's Day, everyone.
Happy Valentine's Day.
At this time, I would ask if there was anyone here for the public comments section. Seeing no one, we'll continue on. This evening, we have Hillary Dubois and Police Chief Scott Allen, and they're going to discuss issues associated with vaping. And vaping happens to be part of the One Voice campaign this month. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having us. So, we have been barked on as trying to address some of the concerns around vaping, which are not just here in East Bridgewater, but in all of the neighboring communities. They're pervasive. They go through the high school into the middle school. I think Principal Duffy probably had hair back before the whole thing started. And it's, you know, been something that a lot of communities have been overwhelmed with in terms of determining disciplinary actions, in terms of managing it, really with, in the confines of still maintaining school every day. We had completed a survey at the beginning of the school year. The data is available. And we've seen, you know, pretty much consistent in some of our measures. Thirty-day use has gone up a little bit. Perceptions about harm have gone down, but generally an understanding that parents don't think it's okay. And then, if you look at peer perceptions, it's sort of equally spread out across the quadrants in terms of if they think it's a great risk or no risk. So, earlier this month, we did some focus groups with seventh and eighth grade students and with juniors and seniors. And it was really enlightening to hear from the youth their perspective. When we talked to the students in terms of what they thought were the most prevalent substances of use, they said alcohol, marijuana, and didn't really even consider that vaping was a drug. When we dug a little bit deeper, they talked about how, yes, in fact, nicotine was a drug, but didn't necessarily align that with vaping. Vaping's not necessarily just nicotine-based products. It might also include THC, which is something that sort of, I think, varies community by community. But the products and the devices look fairly similar. So, the, all of the youth in both classes discussed that about every three to four times they use the restroom, there's someone vaping in the bathroom. Some students talked about how it was disruptive to their experience within the classrooms. Others talked about how it created an awkward environment when they would go to the restroom, so they wouldn't use the restroom. One of the things that was really surprising, and I think important to note, and it might have been because we were within health classes, was both the juniors and seniors and the seventh and eighth graders, they knew that vapes all included nicotine. They knew that they were addictive. They understood the harms associated with them. But whether or not they perceived it as being harmful was not necessarily sort of standard across the board. They understood and knew and recognized that some of their peers were addicted to vaping. Some kids talked about how they knew friends that tried to stop and they couldn't. They talked about their feelings and perspective towards consequences. In both classes, they talked about that it went all throughout the high school and the middle school. And then, both classes also discussed that they knew of fifth and sixth graders that were vaping. And that might sound really shocking, but we hear that in all of the districts that we work with. So, what we're working on is trying to create some best practices through my organization around how communities and schools can support students and address the vaping issue. Information and resources for parents. I think a lot of parents don't know what vaping products look like. They're very diverse in terms of shape and size. We're looking at providing some information and resources for professional development for staff and faculty, so that they can recognize when something that looks like maybe a USB in the computer, or looks like a battery for a phone might be charging in their classroom, and they might not even realize that it's a vape. So, it was providing some information, education to the adults, I think, could be really important. I think the youth know how prevalent it is. They know that in some places, instances, students are kind of trying to up the ante and become more and more brazen in their use. So, it's not just the bathrooms. It might be in classrooms. It might be in hallways. And I think, within certain groups, there's this active thought about how to be a little bit more brazen about it. So, if we can better inform adults, it might help to address the issue. But realizing that right now, a lot of the vaping information and resources are so new that it's hard to kind of figure out really a hands-on approach to address it. So, it definitely is a multifaceted, multi-sector approach.
Just to, for those that aren't familiar with Hillary, her group through the High Point Treatment Center, she's the director of programs. So, we've worked collectively between the school, the police department, E.B. Hope, P.C.O. Hope on substance use. And we have our monthly meetings chaired by Dr. Williams with the superintendent at the school, with the culmination of our teams and the district attorney's office. And during those discussions, this has just become a, you know, it's our number-one topic. For those that didn't see, the Surgeon General declared it an epidemic right now for vaping for use. And it's a challenge. It presents a challenge, obviously, at the school, for the police department. You know, we're actually working, I attended a meeting just before the holidays with the Public Board of Health, where we're looking to update our local regulations, because vaping obviously was not, you know, around, you know, years ago, never mind, you know, 20, 30 years ago, when they first, you know, developed these regulations. So, we will be updating those. For those that don't know, it is now illegal to buy tobacco under the age of 21. But there is a grace period now, too, for people born before December 31st, 2018. So, those are some of the challenges that we're dealing with on the law enforcement side. And again, we're looking at it from the public health lens, you know. We have kids, we know, and from talking at the school, that, you know, fifth, sixth, seventh graders, and there's kids that can't stop, and they're trying to. And it's, you know, it's very concerning, because it's another, you know, piece of this, you know, puzzle that we're trying to, you know, combat with all of the other substances out there, never mind now adding vaping to the mix. And, you know, again, it's something we're educating and working collectively on together.
And we're going to work with Independence Academy, with Ryan up at the North River Collaborative. Independence Academy started this, a new at-risk program. It's called Upper Course. He'll be here probably at the end of February, beginning of March, to speak to the, to the school committee. We may go to policy on this, because it's a behavior that we need to stop. We certainly, but it's a drug. And, just like E.B. Hope, just like a lot of the coalition, we don't want to punish kids for their use, because it's an addictive drug. Nicotine is very, very addictive, but there is other things. We want to change their behavior and give them knowledge, and to provide them an opportunity to learn about it, to understand about it, and to turn, turn around. And that's what Independence Academy does. Yes, they do have students there who are, it's an at-risk school, but he's designed this upper course for students who are vaping, because it is one of our number-one, well, it is the number-one issue right now in the South Shore. There's not a principal or superintendent who doesn't talk about it in any meeting. This is just huge. We're hearing from Plymouth right now, who put the first detectors in. They're saying they're going off at a rate, they want to turn them off, because they're going off so much, that the assistant principals can't keep up with. The text comes from the smoke, or whatever it emits, the fume, the vapor emits, and it sets off a signal that Texas, the principal, or assistant principals, whoever, assistant principal gets it, he knows which, or she knows which bathroom to go to. They go. By the time they're there, kids have gone in or out. Might not even be the student who set it up, but there may be somebody else in there. So, and they just, we can't keep up with it, because it's so prevalent. It's an epidemic. But we'd like to, I'd like to bring that to the district, and to let parents know, we're going to take it very seriously. And, on their first, you know, is it on the first time we catch them vaping, or is it their second time? On their first or second, we're going to go very, we're going to be rigorous on this, and they will be out of school, and they will go directly to the Independence Academy up at Upper Course. I think it's the best way to go. It's the only way we're going to deter this. And if we don't take a measure and step forward, we're going to continue to just slide down the slope.
What does sending them to Independence Academy mean?
They go, it's called the Upper Course. It's Independence Academy. It's up and back of Brockton High School. It's in an old, it's in an old, I think, elementary school that they took over. And they would go up, and they would have English, math, in the day, but they also have a social, emotional healing period. That's why I want him to come, talk a little bit more about it. But they also have a core, like, probably about an hour. It's 10 to 2. It's during the day. It's, it's, it's an alternative to out-of-school suspension, which we do not do here. We do most of our in-school suspensions, unless it is a zero tolerance. This is becoming a zero tolerance issue for us. It's an illegal drug. They're illegal to have for kids under the age of 21. So, how they're getting it, I have no idea. But they're bringing it into school, so I'm, so I'd like to deem it zero tolerance. They would leave here, go to, go to Upper Course at the Independence Academy, and they would be brief, or get a course on vaping and the dangers of vaping. And they would also have a English class and a math class during the day. And then, social, and some social, and social emotion, healing period. I think that's what Ryan calls it. I'm not sure, but...
Is it a one-day program?
It could be, it could be one day. It could be three days. It could be as many days as we would like. I'd like to go one-for-one. It's $63 a day for us to send a student there, for this.
Does it require transportation?
Does it? No. But, out-of-school, if I was a parent, but this is what I'm saying. This is how we're going to, I'd like to talk to parents about...
Asking about the math.
We don't do that, we don't do transportation for it.
How does that get covered?
Parents.
Okay.
But, as Dr. Williams and I have attended two in a law conference, that now, DESI will use that as a day in school, will not count against the student who was suspended. It'll count as a day that the student participated in school, so it won't count against them. So, it's a win-win for the student. It's a win-win for the parent, and it's a win-win for the school, if we can deter students for using this and move it around. I hope that we can have parents, like Hillary just said, if our parents and the community could help us stop this, that would be the way to go.
How many kids are we talking about? How many students are we looking at?
I defer to the school, but it's, you know, it's problematic, and, you know, maybe...
So, one of the things that the school districts are doing is they're giving options. So, it can be an out-of-school suspension, and it would be, you know, an unexcused absence and missing that instruction for the day. Or, the option, instead of taking those days out-of-school suspension, they would have this other alternative. And so, like the superintendent said, it wouldn't be on their, their record as being suspended or unexcused absence, because for us, we want them to still get their education, and we want them to still get that knowledge and understanding of the importance of the dangers. So, for us, you know, it's not so much that we want kids to be punished through unexcused absences and suspensions on their records. Most importantly, we want them to learn about the dangers and make better decisions.
But are we talking about number of kids? Is that what...
Yeah, the sheer, like, the raw number. Is it 1%? Is it 2%?
I don't think anyone knows for sure.
How do we know?
Right.
It's so early on. I know there was a stat, and Hillary might have it, you know, 90% of the kids polled in the last two years have said they've experimented at least one time, you know, one time within this one study. I mean, it's so early on for data, but I'll turn to Hillary here.
So, from the survey that was conducted this fall, self-reported, 16% of students in the schools in grade 8, 9, 11, and 12, 16% reported any use. I don't think that's accurate, based on what the focus groups said.
Do we think that eighth grade is the point of entry to...
No. No, we had a fifth grader.
I'm saying this as a father of a third grader.
Rob, we had a fifth grader. We had a Mitchell School student that was vaping. This is not an isolated high school issue or middle school issue. This is an issue that is going, and it is, to the chief, he would tell, it's an epidemic, and it's flying. And I think that because it looks like a...
USB.
A USB. It doesn't look harmful. Kids third, fourth, fifth grade are putting it in their mouth, not thinking anything of it. I did not realize, I was just told the other day, that these USBs that, you know, you plug into the side of your laptop, or to your hard drive, those are vapes. Those are pen jewels.
Yep, and they're charging them on the computers in the school.
And just a quick, so 90% of all smokers start before the age of 18. 3,000 minors a day in the United States are experimenting. So, it is absolutely challenging. And kudos to, you know, the school, Mr. Leonard, the athletic director, Mr. Coach Savage, for, you know, part of that One Voice campaign, you know, that Ms. Pennington talked about, was, you know, a great, great leadership by the school in bringing that awareness at the Middleborough East Bridgewater High School varsity game. For those that got there last week, it was a great, a very well-attended event. And it was just to bring that awareness. And some of the quotes that Hillary and her staff took from the focus study were actually, you know, read to the crowd, and really, you know, enlightened, as a parent, you know, some of the things their peers are saying, you know, about their peers that are using, you know, that are vaping.
Our classmates have done a really nice job, too, with it, you know, some of the Instagram videos and stuff, and promotions that they've done. Mr. Duffy had assemblies today for all the grades. And it was, you know, for me to hear from students saying that they think the consequences need to be more strict. And, you know, you don't often hear kids saying that.
I agree with that 100%. I have a couple of concerns with sending kids to another school for an entire day. Would the school pay for that? Yeah. I mean, someone who's physically addicted to something, you can sit them down and give them a lecture about how what they're doing is bad, but they're physically addicted to it. I find it hard to believe, in this day and age, the internet, that anyone over the age of 12 doesn't know that nicotine is bad for you, and vaping is bad for you. I agree with the kids. I think we need to do something that makes kids realize that's, you can't do that here.
Right. I agree with you, John, but sending them home, they can vape at home, and they're going to find it. Independence Academy is a tested at-risk school, and it is one of five in the state. And it is one of the highly touted substance abuse schools, high schools in the Commonwealth. Ryan is a leader of that school. He is a good principal, but he has, he has engulfed himself in knowledge, and he brings in the police, he brings in other people. The people that work for him are just not public educators. They have a full-time psychologist, a full-time substance abuse preventative counselor. So, the kids don't just go there and hear how bad vaping is. They hear about the whole gamut of what's going on. And the students that go there, there could be a heroin user that is there. They test students on arrival every morning. They test their heart rate during the day. They have a full-time nurse, or nurse practitioner onsite. I mean, they're, they have heavy hitters of heroin, cocaine, crack, I mean, all the drugs, oxycodone. Unfortunately, this is, this is pushing us into that arena. I don't want us to be into that arena. And, I mean, there's other ways of looking at this. I'm listening to other superintendents, other principals. We're having a tough time getting a handle on this.
Can I ask you, what's the capacity of the school? And how many, how many students can be there at any given time?
I think full-time students is 40, but I think for the day program, I don't know for the day program, for full-time students, it's 40.
Are they a nonprofit or for-profit?
They're nonprofit, you know, regulated by DESI. They're originally funded through the Department of Public Health Bureau of Substance Abuse Services.
And they part, and North River Collaborative houses them, are collaborative. So, we, we get a lot of work on this. And I have to tell you that I'm one, I was probably the biggest advocate for this upper course. I was the one who pushed it at North River. I feel that we need something like this. Even, and I don't even, I don't like to say this, Chief, but even low, the, the usage of marijuana, because it has become legal, kids think because it's legal to sell it or to buy it, that it's okay. I don't think it's okay. But even that, we could send to the upper course. I mean, if we got into that. And we, I haven't seen much, we don't hear much of that.
We have had a couple of THC, you know, devices, you know, the electric cigarette devices, but it's not as prevalent as the actual vaping. But again, you know, Department of Public Health stats will tell you, and Hillary brought it to my attention about five years ago, you know, first use of alcohol, tobacco, marijuana, the earlier that first use is, the age of onset, the higher the risk factors, you know, formulate on developing a substance use later on in life. So, again, those are the, the things that we're concerned about. I agree with John. We want to educate as much, and get out there early, make, earlier the, you know, earlier the age, the better. But again, it is so overwhelming right now. I, I think you could probably just about go to any school and spend the day, you know, grabbing kids with vapes and/or vaping, that, you know, with the superintendent saying, we've got to try to think outside the box, I think, on, on how to, you know, really get control of this.
I certainly, full support of the program. Sounds like it's, makes sense. It isn't just sending the kids home, punishing them. To your point, John, you're right. If some kid's already addicted, one day out of school is probably not going to do it. I would think you'd want to hope to get that kid who's maybe just starting, and get caught, and then get him off track. But to me, the absolute biggest picture is, if you think all the way, as Chief Allen just said, all the way to the youngest, whatever level you want to put it at, is to teach the kids about individuality and peer pressure. As, as I've grown up over many a decade, and, you know, experienced a lot of whatever's been out there in society, it's, it's amazing to me what peer pressure does. And if you don't know how to, you know, I can't say control of, how do you, how do you process it, then you get caught up in that, well, hey, everybody's doing it, and you're not cool if you don't. If you can somehow, some way, I certainly support everything that's going on. I would love to see that there's, there's programs happening in first, second, third, fourth grade, to tell kids, it's okay, you're an individual, you're totally unique. Just because somebody else is doing something, you don't have to do it. You make your own choices, and you listen to people who are older than you, or smarter than you, to say, oh, that's probably not a good thing to do. That, to me, is where it's fundamentally, you know, you talk about drinking and drugs, and it all, I've heard the same thing years after years. It goes earlier and earlier. And if we don't have some sort of organized approach to that, well, it's always going to be thus, that, you know, the time to catch somebody, and you're not going to catch everybody. And I don't mean catch in the sense of catching them doing something they shouldn't do, but catch their thought process early enough in its development to say, I'm strong enough to say, I don't, I don't have to do that. You do whatever you're going to do, I'm going to do what I'm going to do. Make fun of me, do whatever you want to do, but there's no way I'm drinking, there's no way I'm vaping, there's no way. You know, and, and just to start to show some support for that kind of thought process, that it isn't something to be scorned, it's something to be admired, that somebody can step out from the crowd and say, I'm, I'm all set, thank you very much. So, to me, that's the fundamental piece. Whether it's vaping now, who knows what it's going to be two years or two days from now. Somebody's going to think of something else that's cool. And, so it's that, that fundamental piece that teaches kids, it's okay. It's okay to say no. You know, make your own choice, don't do it because everyone else is doing it.
I agree 100%, and I think the education part is a big part, particularly when they're younger. But I also think, at the older grades, particularly in the high school, sadly, it sounds like at the Mitchell, we need to get the kids that are doing it. And, I mean, kids have been smoking tobacco since there was tobacco, that's commercially sold. It used to be easy. You could smell the kids who had had a cigarette out of gym class. Can't do that anymore with vaping. What, what are we doing to catch the kids that are? I mean, we need to let them know, you don't do that in this building, you know? We can't police the kids when they're outside of school, but, you know, I'm fine with coming down on them like a ton of bricks if they're caught in the school building.
I agree, and that's one of the reasons I'd like Ryan to come and just talk about the program. Another thing, we understand that kids are vaping in the hallway. They can hide it, and they're blowing it in their jacket, in their shirts, backpacks, we've heard. They're going into the stalls, they're going in...
Nurse's bathroom.
Nurse's bathroom, any place, every place.
The lookout.
We have the behavioral specialists, the behavioral specialist, assistant principal, the principal, they're walking in and out of bathrooms. You know, we're working on our teachers to work with us, and to everybody in and out of those bathrooms all the time. Mr. Duffy put teachers on bathroom duty this year. We're running into some attendance issues with our faculty. You know, it's winter, we've got colds and the flu, and their own children's sick, so we have an attendance issue. So, then we got to get into coverage issue, and that means that we have nobody watching the bathroom. So, because we need to watch a classroom of 35, so that nobody could be out in the hallway watching a bathroom. So, it's just, it's a compounding problem, and it's one of those things that we're just going to have to think outside the box, so we can get a hold of it.
How expensive are the detectors?
We've saw, some are at $1,000. We have saw one at $659, and I think the chief showed us one at $479.
And then, the software goes back, there's an additional cost.
Yeah. So, it's like, one was $1,000. That was like, the one that I think Plymouth had. And then, there was the $659, and then there was one at $459. We're still looking at, we think they might come down.
See, because...
Yeah, we're thinking, we're still looking at them.
Triggers that, by the time the teacher gets down there, the kids are gone.
You'll see it on our budget. We're looking at putting them into the bathrooms. It's just, by the time you get there, that's another of the issues.
Part of it, too, is if knowing it's there, the awareness piece, it may be less likely to do it in the school, knowing that there's potential enforcement and/or, you know, consequences. So, you know, certainly a deterrent factor.
Right. So, it isn't our...
How many bathrooms do we have in the high school?
How many?
How many student bathrooms do we have?
I couldn't tell you. I would say there's three on each floor, or two on each side.
There's, um...
Let's say, two on each side.
You got to ballpark that.
Yeah. I would say there's two, two on a floor, one, you know, one set on one side and one set on the other.
But again...
Cafeteria, we hear, is one of the biggest spots for it, because they're all in a, they're all gathered. And if you have, you know, the assistant principals down there with five teachers in there, proctoring and, or watching, overseeing the cafeteria, along with Mrs. Vaughn, that are walking around, how many people are down there? About five at a time. They're watching the cafeteria, they're watching, helping watch the lines.
Blowing into their jacket.
And they're still, and then they're going into the bathrooms.
Doesn't really matter all that much.
That's a fair point.
So, but we are looking at it, you know, I think just having you come out this evening and just talk about it, that it's here, that we did do a survey, that, like you said, they'll self, they'll self-reflect, but will they always truthfully answer about myself? You never know. But I think just this, and then having Ryan come in, I mean, it's just another way for us to educate ourselves, and what are we going to do? You know, we, we... You know, we've had some parents that have come in here and have challenged us about giving back the vape. You know, the Juul, it's fifty-nine dollars and the pods are twenty dollars. I don't really know that much about it. But now, if the principal has a problem, they bring it down to me. We put it, we put it in a sealed package. I hand it to the SRO in a sealed package that's taped. We put the date on it and then they bring it up to the police station and they dispose of them. We're not giving them back.
SRO?
School resource officer. School resource officer.
We have Tulitha Conner and then Cecilia Ketchator.
We have two of them.
What's the, how old do you have to be to buy a device?
Well, twenty, right now, it's twenty-one years old now.
We have parents who want them back.
Yes, we have parents who have challenged us that they have bought this, it is their money, they want it back, it's theirs. I've even asked, I did ask the DA when I was at a conference with him. He said, it's in your school, if it is zero tolerance, if it is paraphernalia you do not want, it becomes yours. So I take them, if the principals or the assistant principal gets nervous with a parent, you know, ask them, I just say, call me down, I'll come down, I'll take it. I, you know, and it's unfortunate, but that's where we're at and.
I don't think that's unfortunate, I think it's ridiculous.
I'm saying, well, it's unfortunate, it's unfortunate that, it's unfortunate that parents are buying vape. It could be on Prime, Amazon, that, you know, the student goes home and he just orders it himself because they can get up on the Prime and Amazon sells them, so.
I don't, that just, there's a school of thought that if you make this, if you come down hard enough where the parents pay attention, they'll start regulating what's going on at home as well.
John, we have people, we've had parents, and I've had parents in the past, take a pack of cigarettes away from the kid and the parents come in and they want the pack of cigarettes back. I've had lighters, I want that lighter back. No, I want that, you know, we've had jackknifes come in, can't have it more, well, you can't have a jackknife even if it's a Swiss Army knife. Usually we'll just take it if it's one of those for, we had a student with Cub Scouts last year who brought one in at the Mitchell School, someone saw it, Mrs. Dupre took it, put it in her desk, had the parent come in, it just don't bring it into school. But it was a Cub Scout that was a, made it to the next level, right? And so we need to make sure that we're, you know, reasonable. But people will come in and say, I want, you know, why did he have that knife? I don't know why he's got a butcher knife in his backpack, but it's now ours. So some parents, maybe it takes them a little bit longer to understand, I don't know, but.
Well, they just need to realize that kid can't do it here. We can't police them at their home.
Well, I agree with that, but when they come in and they bring a vape, when they bring a Juul in and then they badger the principal or the assistant principal, give it back, give it back, give it back, give it back, or follow the school resource officer as she walks out with it in a bag saying, that's mine, I'm going up to the police station to get it, and the school resource officer says, no, you're not because the school has deemed it against their policy. So it's going to take, it's going to take education for the community and for the adults as much as it is going to take for us in the health curriculum that we're looking at right now that we're putting in and the DARE program that we'll be looking at in the next couple of weeks, you'll start to see open up again at the Mitchell School. That's one of the target points they're going to be hitting is the vaping. We just talked about this, am I correct on that?
Yeah, the state is revamping the health standards and substance use prevention actually will be down in the lower grades. I mean, it's always been middle school, high school, and now it will start in the K C two standards. Talking about just prescription medications at home and the dangers of, you know, children taking medication that wasn't prescribed to them, so.
I remember it was a big deal when it was going to be done in the future, and now it's.
Now I think we have to be careful too of telling kids not to take gummy bears. I mean, one of the schools just had eleven elementary school kids eating the CBD gummies and.
Edibles.
Yeah, you'll see more and more prevalence as more and more retail shops become in the area. And Dr. Williams started talking curriculum for a couple of years now. You know, so for those in the public, we're not getting rid of DARE. It's going to be health and wellness, they're still going to be, and it's actually going to be enhanced, you know, through this curriculum. So I think it's going to, you know, really be more beneficial moving forward here because we do need to get to these kids sooner and earlier. And it can't just be in the sixth grade and collectively we're all on that same, that mission, that focus.
I think that's spot on, it's early, early, early.
And Chief, I don't want to rain on your parade, but I wanted to talk about the basketball game tonight that we did, the vaping at halftime. Chief Allen always does this to me, always comes in here.
I want to give a little, Mr. Duffy though, I think I left his name up.
But at the boys' basketball game a week ago against Middleboro, they had, they talked about vaping and the issues where the parents were there, the students were there, students spoke, the coach spoke. I think it's, it's nice to see that we're starting to take a proactive approach, getting people involved when we have a crowd at a game. Maybe we start doing it at concerts. You know, I continue to say, we need to start making sure that people remember where the exits are for events, whether it's at the Mitchell School, whether it's at Central School, in the cafeteria where Mrs. Byrne holds her events, or if it's at the auditorium. You have two exits at the back, you have two exits up on top, you have two exits behind me so that people understand that it's not just about exits and then we can go, we can go from there and then say, here's a little commercial on vaping. Maybe we guess, maybe start, yeah, right. Three, maybe we start sending out some three-by-five cards at every meeting. This is what vaping can do to you.
Thank you to Hillary and her team and E.B. Hope, Susan Silver, George Kelly. They were there part of the One Voice campaign that, you know, Ellen, we sit on together. So it's great to see that community collaboration. We've been having our meetings down here, monthly meetings now with Hillary's team down here at the school, which I think is critically important.
Great.
Thank you, thank you for speaking about vaping tonight.
Thank you for that work.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Well done, thank you.
Thank you, Hillary.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Matt Condon. He is the East Bridgewater High School student, he's with the Student Advisory Council and he's going to update.
And his sister's playing in the basketball game, so he's got to get back there.
Welcome.
And then run back and tell me the score.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So March is a very exciting time up here at the high school. There's a lot of events planned by different clubs. I've got two sheets of papers, I'm just going to go for it, so. Student Senate has begun planning March Madness Week, which will be March eighteenth through the twenty-second. This is the largest display of school spirit throughout the entire year. We encourage all students to sign up for an activity, participate in the Spirit Days and buy their class colored T-shirts. They have to talk to their executive committees to purchase those. Student Senate will also be selling rally towels this year. This is a new addition for us and this will be help, this will help us offset some of the costs. We have to fundraise a little bit. We spent a lot of money in the past few years on March Madness. So talk to Student Senate for the rally towels, they'll be in each class color for each student to buy. Key Club will be hosting the Mr. UHS competition on Friday, March twenty-second at seven PM in the auditorium. Tickets will be going on sale sometime in early March. Foreign Language Honor Society will be hosting Foreign Language Week. The date, the week is still to be determined. Both the senior class and junior class are planning their proms. The seniors will be Thursday, March twenty-third at Lake Pearl and Rantham. And the juniors will be Friday, May third at Indian Pond Country Club in Kingsley. The sophomore class is hosting a fundraising night at Chipotle in Brockton on Thursday, March ninth from four to eight PM. The freshman class is hosting a lock-in here at the school on Friday, March first from ten PM to six AM on Saturday morning. Tickets are fifteen dollars and will be sold through Thursday, February twenty-eighth. National Honor Society will be hosting a dodgeball tournament after school sometime in March. The week is still to be determined. There's a lot of music events coming up tomorrow. The senior jazz band, junior jazz band and rhythmics will be performing three shows for all grades here at the high school. And following vacation, they'll be attending the Cape Cod Jazz Festival on Monday, March fourth. And then for the first three weekends in March, they'll be attending, some music students will be attending the All-State Music Festival, the Junior District Festival and the Senior Semis Festival. Drama delivered their Valentine's Day candy grams today. And last week, math team competed in their final meet of the season. They scored a total of thirty points and that was the highest scoring meet of the season.
Wow, awesome, very good.
That's it, so March, very busy time. Thank you.
Good to have a Student Advisory Council update. We haven't had one in a while, so good to have you guys back.
Could I ask a question?
Sure.
I don't want to jump the spot, but what is the Foreign Language Week?
So they're still figuring.
Do you speak Spanish in the halls or?
It's a collaboration with the Spanish students and French students. It's usually like the students in French three and four. They just kind of plan some events. I know last year they had like a movie after school. They usually do some information on the morning announcements, like they talk about a famous Spanish painter. So it just depends, they're still figuring out what they're going to do.
Matt, you going to France?
I'm not, I went to Spain.
Spain last year, right? Okay. It's full, the trip is full, I'm understanding, right?
I think this may be around eighty, I could be completely off on that number, but I know it's a large number.
I know it's a very large number, I didn't know if you were going. You going, Dr. Williams?
No. My boss said I had to work. A lot of people are excited, even the teachers, they're already, they're ready for April vacations.
Joey, are you going?
No, I'm going to have to share in twenty-nine to twelve at the half at basketball game.
All right, us?
Yes.
Okay, very good. This is for the divisional title, so this is very big for us. This is a girls' basketball.
Hence the parking.
Yes, and plus there is college here at AIC today. Thanks, Matt. Twenty-nine to twelve at the half.
And in the interest of time, John has to leave this evening, he has to leave early, so we're going to just run through the action items really quickly. So the first up, if that's okay with everyone, which I'm assuming it is. So the first up, I would take a motion to approve the school committee meeting minutes from January twenty-third, two thousand nineteen, and January thirty-first, two thousand nineteen.
So moved?
Moved by Gordon, second by Hazel. All in favor?
Aye.
And I would take a motion to approve the Council Payable Warrant Thirty-two V dated January twenty-second, two thousand nineteen and Thirty-four V dated February seventh, two thousand nineteen.
So moved?
Moved by Gordon, second by Hazel, all in favor?
Aye.
And I would take a motion to approve payroll warrant Thirty-three P S dated February sixth, two thousand nineteen.
So moved?
Moved by Gordon, second, second by Hazel, all in favor?
Aye.
And I would take a motion to approve changing the evening of the school committee meetings from Thursday to Tuesday effective with the two thousand nineteen-twenty school year. This was tabled about two or three times.
I thought we tabled that to after, to after the new.
Oh, the election.
The election.
No, I didn't think, did we?
I think you did, so that it would give everybody else another, it would give, if there's any new people, an opportunity.
So table till after, after.
After the.
After elections, okay.
Actually, speaking of the election, before I run, I was up at the clerk's office dropping off my papers and she expressed concern again, the run is going to be the day of the election again.
Okay, that's up next, so just hold that thought.
It's up next?
Hold that thought, no, it's not on the agenda, but hold that thought.
Okay.
So let me just finish these action items first and then I'll get to the next thing. So I would take a motion, so we tabled the changing this date, the days. I would take a motion to, let's see, Dr. Williams, the Assistant Superintendent has reviewed the home education plan for the attached student, the two thousand eighteen-nineteen school year, and Superintendent Legault recommends its approval. I'd take a motion to approve that at this time. So moved? Moved by Hazel, second by Gordon, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And I would take a motion to approve the proposed two thousand nineteen-twenty school calendar, which is in your packet.
So moved?
Moved by Gordon.
Second.
Second by Rob, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Is that a unanimous?
Yeah.
Okay. And at this time, I would take a motion to approve the very generous donation of three hundred and fifty dollars from the East Bridgewater Public Schools Athletics Booster to the East Bridgewater Junior-Senior High School Athletics Program. Second, moved by Gordon, second by Hazel, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you to the EBPS Athletic Boosters, that was very nice. So on to my next thing, so I'm going to skip this because I know John has to leave, so I'm going to go through this quickly. So we're on the report of subcommittees and standing committees, I don't think we have any updates. But I did want to mention to everybody that I attended the selectmen's meeting on Monday, February eleventh. And so the town meeting, which you probably all know, but I'm saying it for the community too, that the town meeting date was voted on and approved to be pushed out to June tenth and we thank the selectmen for voting to approve that change. And our public hearing has been rescheduled for Tuesday, March fifth at seven PM in the auditorium at the junior-senior high school. Mr. John Shea, our business administrator and Superintendent Legault will give a budget presentation with a real needs budget and a two percent budget and what that impact will be of only a two percent budget. We will be certifying our budget on March fifth after the presentation. And next up, I would like to address the emails that I received, but I want to address them in a correct manner because, well, I'll get into that. So I received emails on January seventeenth, February fifth and February eleventh requesting agenda items and the agenda was already set for the January twenty-third meeting. And this is our first meeting in February, not including the thirty-first, which was a special edition with the executive session and just a quick open meeting. Agenda items requests require planning and preparation, which takes time, and I did not respond via email because I didn't want to create a dialogue back and forth. And our open meeting law allows for boards and committees to use email exchanges for scheduling purposes and we're not permitted to deliberate via email. I ask, I ask that you be patient and continue to request agenda items via email. So the following agenda items requested are bullying, which happens to be a part of the One Voice campaign and is a town-wide initiative. Bullying is on our agenda for the first March meeting. Our policy J I C F B, bullying prevention addresses bullying as well as cyberbullying and this policy was approved by the school committee last April twelfth, two thousand eighteen and is based on Massachusetts general law. Let's see. And because we're in a review cycle for health and wellness, both physical and mental, a couple of bullying programs are being researched to see which one or both works best for our needs. And the district also has a bullying and bullying prevention presentation coming up on Wednesday, February twenty-seventh at six-thirty in the junior-senior high school auditorium and all are welcome. So it's coming up in the list. Teacher turnover is going to be discussed at the next Friday, February, next February meeting. Discussion on approval process for one-time spending from revolving accounts will be discussed at the budget subcommittee meeting on February twenty-fifth and then brought to the full committee on February twenty-eighth. Viking Sports Parents Run will be discussed at the next February meeting and constituent services will be discussed either at the second meeting in March or the second meeting in April or even after town meeting, which that's what I wanted to check with you guys about.
Well, I think for the run, we need to give them as much time as possible, but it's coming up April sixth.
We cannot discuss it today, it is not on the agenda.
Okay.
I checked, I checked today, I made sure.
We brought this up last year and said we were going to address it. So I would hate to think that we're holding off, you know, to give them even less time.
I can't, I can't, we can't discuss it because it's not on the agenda.
We could discuss anything the chairman decides to discuss. If you don't want it, that's a different matter.
I spoke with someone from the MASC today and I was advised, if it's not on the agenda, we cannot discuss it.
So when will we discuss it?
At the next February twenty-eighth.
On February twenty-eighth?
So we're going to give them less than a month to move if they have to. No, a little more than a month.
Over a month.
Yeah.
Over a month.
So I guess I need to find out from you all, Teresa had brought up constituent services, so do you want it at the second meeting in March, the second meeting in April or after town meeting?
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
To talk about constituent services or start talking about it? Do you want it discussed at the second meeting in March, the second meeting in April or after town meeting?
We'll do it as soon as we can. What was her concern?
Teresa wanted to discuss, starting constituent services with the committee, but I have some issues that I wanted to discuss with her whenever we start discussing it. So I just need to find out when you all want to start discussing it. Because what we really need to do, because it's budget season, I know all year is budget season for us, but we have town meeting coming up and we're going to be talking about our budget at our budget hearing and whatever else might come up with regard to the budget, so we really need to stay focused on that too. So I don't want to make a big deal out of smaller items when we have the budget that we need to be discussing.
Well, the budget's going to be discussed at the presentation and at the budget subcommittee meeting, so I don't see it taking up time in our normal meetings. I wouldn't suggest we reach out to two. Well, the budget's gonna be discussed at the presentation and at the budget subcommittee meeting, so I don't see it taking up time in our normal meetings. I wouldn't suggest we reach out to Teresa if that was something she wanted to discuss, see which date she'd prefer to do.
Okay, I could do that too.
But I do like the focus on the budget.
Yeah, but we, I mean, budget's taken care of in the budget presentation and the budget subcommittee. I don't think we have to not address issues during budget season simply because it's budget season. We're not 10-year-olds. We can walk and chew gum at the same time.
But I do think that our focus should be primarily in the budget, 'cause nothing else happens without the budget, so.
Yep. That doesn't mean, we don't look at other things, so.
So I'll check with Teresa about the constituent service. And next up, we have Super Tennis Corner.
Just to the calendar, the NRC update is, we, we signed an MOU with them. Doesn't have any money, doesn't have anything really related except getting more social and emotional opportunities, hands-on, and some more people, clinicians, for at-risk students and at-risk opportunities for us. Using, having more of a consortium, having more people in the collaborative be able to get together, meet, talk about some of the issues that are happening in all the schools. So we'll have, we'll have someone from here who can go and talk about what, what they're seeing with our students, what the at-risk are, and then we could have clinicians come here as well. Next year, as you know, we're, that's part of our budget, we'll be bringing in two social work, social worker adjustment counselors at a really great rate using the North River Collaborative. These people will come in and help us work with our at-risk students. The clinicians will be here working, and the program is at West Bridgewater now, and they, they can't say enough about it. And it's, it helps offset the cost of having, you know, another full-time school psychologist or adjustment counselor. We're gonna go through the collaborative to get that.
I actually met one of the Bridgewater students we have, who's, I think in the Mitchell. Very impressed by him, and then bumped into a couple parents who had nothing but incredible things to say about him, so that-
The interns.
I assume that's the program we talked about last week, right?
Interns that are working under Karen Clifford, but these are similar. They're graduate students, and the reason why we have a partnership with North River Collaborative is because they're supervising and evaluating them, but we're giving them obviously the experience to work in the school setting, so.
Just it's nice to see that that setup can work.
Yeah, and Karen-
These parents raved about it.
Karen's doing a nice job bringing as many interns as she can in here from Bridgewater State. They get a lot of hours with us, but the best part is there's another set of eyes and another set of kid gloves for our students. We seem to have more and more, you know, social, emotional. At Reed's, we have tabled the building project. As you know, I told you that we, we were trying to build a new school. Right now, they, collaboratives in the Commonwealth under Massachusetts general law do not get, cannot get into the MSBA and, or the accelerated repair program, so they don't, they can't offset their costs, so a $30 million building would be a $30 million building, and we, as part of that collaborative, would have to increase our membership fee. And we, I'm on that subcommittee. We decided that it would be a little bit too much for each of the 30 to 28 schools to, to put up for $30 million at this time. However, it's not off the table. We're still looking at it. We're still advocating the legislators for it to see if we could use, get into the MSBA and try to push the law a little bit, but we're also looking for building space in other areas. The executive director, Dr. Craig, does not wanna move from Middleborough because it's such a, it's a center area for a lot of the, for a lot of the schools that use the Reed's Collaborative. They have a, a very progressive and probably the best hard-of-hearing schools. A lot, a lot of students go there, and so she does not wanna move that because it seems like a really good general area. There are a couple of buildings, old office buildings right now that are for lease over in that area, that general area, by for the 495, so she's going to be looking at those buildings to see if a school could be put into one of those buildings. They did that for another collaborative, not Charms, but Belco?
Bico?
Bico. Bico did that a few years ago. They, they were gonna, they wanted to build a new school. They ended up finding a office building. If your office building is sitting there for three, four years, and no one wants it, and someone comes in and says, yeah, I'll do it, you know, and you know you're gonna get a 10-year or 20-year rental lease agreement, you know, someone's gonna do that with us. So that, I just wanted to let you know that that's off the table at this time for the Reed's. CPAC, Dr. Williams and I sat in at a CPAC meeting with our, the CPAC Parents Meeting. Ellen came as well because they wanted to see the district representation, and they also wanted to the school committee. They just wanna say that they're here to help. They wanna support parents. They wanna support kids. They want, they would like to come to a school committee meeting and just talk about what CPAC is, but they want parents to know at home. If you need help, look up on our website. You can find out who the president of the CPAC Parents Organization is. It's, I think it's under our-
Janine Mark.
Per pupil, our pupil personnel, the special education side of the website. You can look up and ask to speak, you know, send them an email. They are advocates. They really know they have immersed themselves in special education law, and they really wanna be part of the program. And the winter sports update, you already heard, on the vaping tonight, we have the girls down there going for division title. This is really a neat thing. The boosters wanna thank them. I can't say enough about our Viking Sports, the Viking Sports Parents Boosters Club. They, they are really doing a nice job. All the coaches have to do is send a request to the athletic director. The athletic director brings it to the boosters, and if they need something for the program, for one of the sports. I actually asked the athletic director to ask the boosters for, they're called, they're made by Kwik, K-W-I-K. They're rain and windshields, like a bleacher for outside on the track or at a game, soccer game, lacrosse game, football game. It's their sort of shelters where the kids can sit underneath the players on the field, except to about 16 people, so, and there'll be one for home and visiting, and it's about 10,000, they're about $6,000, a little less than $5,000 apiece, so I wanna thank them because when it rains, we're still gonna play. When it snows and it's cold and it's windy, we're still gonna play, but it's nice to have them out there. And last but not least is Unified Sports. If you haven't come to a game, and if you can ever make a game, if you really wanna see what sport can do for kids who are challenged, go to Unified Sports. We played basketball a week ago. The parents were there. There were kids there. Our team, we have a few kids that go to an out-of-district placement that are not here, but still are on our team, and when they show up and run out onto the court, they are so excited to be part of the program and to put on a Vikings T-shirt and have their name written on the back of it. It's so important for inclusion. It's something that I am very, I'm gonna advocate for this district. I'm happy that Dr. Williams is pushing universal design and inclusive practices through instruction. We need these types of opportunities for these kids, for our kids all the time, and for their peers and their models that are out on that floor with them. Even Dr. Williams' son was involved with the soccer program. It enlightens them. It opens their eyes up to a whole new world that maybe they were in kindergarten together, and they didn't realize that they were different at that time, and then 10 years later, they're a little different right now. But when they play a sport, they're all the same, and it's fun, and it's healthy, and it's good-natured, and it's about life. And, you know, I wanna thank Matt Bellageron for, for picking up basketball this year. I wanna thank the peers that are out there with the kids and the parents that come to watch the kids play. They're just as excited as we are, and to get out there and watch them. And Mr. Leonard, he loves it, the athletic director. We all love it, and so it's just great to see them, and they will be at our sports awards night. So that's all I have, and now I know that I see Mrs. Vaughn ready to go this evening, but you can't come until the chair tells you. I can see you over there, out of the corner of my eye.
I've got a friend, I just wanted to let Mr. Ross know. I know you were doing something on the before and after. My wife and I, we put our daughter in the chair.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. That's amazing stuff. I couldn't do it without my uncles and sisters.
Don't you want to be around her?
Thank you very much.
They're great.
I appreciate that.
Enjoy your dinner.
Happy Valentine's Day.
33-24 at the third. I keep getting text updates from somebody that really loves basketball.
He also seems to know what agenda number we're on.
Yeah.
Who's 33 or who's 34?
He is.
He's supposed to be 33. Whoever they're playing is 24.
Rockland?
Rockland.
Next up, we have Ms. Deb Vaughn, Food Service Director for the School Lunch Program. Welcome. I've eaten the food in the cafeterias, and it's pretty tasty.
I know.
Pretty.
Thank you.
I had a nice salad the other day with some tuna fish on top. It was healthy.
Did you try the parfait today?
No. I'll try lunch again another day.
Yeah, it was a success. Thank you.
I do, I'm sad when I come in, I miss the fish. It's delicious.
Good, I'm glad you enjoyed it. So three parts of the program I'd like to discuss tonight. One is onsite review that we had Monday and Tuesday, investing back in the program and our professional development. So Monday and Tuesday, I was our onsite review from Desi. We have a full two days. We had breakfast and lunch, they reviewed. Our staff did an amazing job. We received a good review. The staff was well-trained on offer versus serve and on food safety.
What was the first thing you said? What was the first thing you said?
Offer versus serve. So we're, we're a school system that you offer versus serve. In other words, when they go through the serving line, they can pick and choose, so it's not-
Offer versus serve. You said it so fast. I'm like, what is she saying?
So that they don't waste food. So that's what we call it.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah, so they're very trained in that. And the second part is food safety. Two parts that need to be corrected in is the, one of the menus is, they was laughing, our February menus. So they reviewed January and February. So in January, on the 15th, there were subgroups that you have to fulfill. So there's greens, and there's orange, and there's starches. At the middle school, we offer not just the main meal, but we alternate meals. So on the 15th, there was beans, also salad. On that subgroup day, we didn't offer a starch, so corrective action on the starch. Again, on the 31st, there was not a bean. So let's say we're offering salad, that hot dog day, you should have offered a bean, so.
I'd just like you to know that I had to sit in with the Department of Education why they told me about our corrective action.
Right.
And at first, I thought she was kidding. She said, you didn't offer a starch on Wednesday, and then you offered too many yellow vegetables on Thursday.
Right.
And I went like this, okay. And I thought it was a joke. And Debbie was like, stop it. And I go, what do you mean, stop it? It's a joke, but it's real.
Right. It's not like we didn't have the vegetables. You have to just have certain color codes Monday through Friday to match certain meals. So the analysis was fine. Corrective action was maybe color code your menu. So we're gonna do that anyhow. So with that said, that was one of them. Next up, she said the eligibility letters for our free and reduce, SNAP letters, seven-digit. They request maybe that we get proof, an eligibility letter, so we'll do that. But other than that, for the two days that they were here, it went phenomenal. They, they review everything from the wellness policy, from, from finances to inventory, from the staff, professional development. So I think the staff did an amazing job, and, you know, we're good for another three years, so.
Oh, good.
We did good.
Well done.
Yeah, I think the staff did good. So moving into that, when they leave, they always wanna know how you are, you're going to invest back into the program, so that's the second part of it. Last year, we worked with a central school, and we did a lot there. We did some painting. So this year, we moved on to the middle school, and instead of leasing milk coolers, we're actually buying them, so we did that. We purchased them. We also purchased two ovens over there as well, and then we're out to bid on a new steamer as well for this year. So I think the equipment's doing really well over there, purchased enough over there, and I think the new project is we're going to paint over there this year, so I think we're good. I think they'll be very happy over there at the middle school when we paint. It looks like they're gonna need it.
Let me know if you need my consultation on colors.
That's right, 'cause you did a great job at the central school. It looks amazing, so. So moving into that, as to professional development, and this year, we normally stepped out of the box a little bit and did a live training instead of in-house, where they come in and do the training one-to-one. We had a couple chefs come into the high school. The theme was Mediterranean. It went really good. It surprised the kids, you know. At first, they were like tzatziki sauce? What's that? But it went really, really good. Tried something different. Next up is Latin and, what else? Asian fusion, so two different ones.
And Deb, you had some students today that said that they liked the orange chicken.
That's, that was leading up into our professional development that I brought in Maureen Gonzalez from Framingham State University to train my staff into more communication, marketing, so they can be more engaged in working with our menu, which brought us into today's whole Valentine's survey, which was very interesting from all three schools. The central school, believe it or not, was one of our top sales today.
What was it?
Top sales.
What?
Usually, we serve about 150 kids. It was 228 today, which was amazing.
Well, it's Valentine's Day. A warm heart, a warm heart, full stomach.
It was the parfaits. And then I have to do, give a shout-out to the middle school for the monitors. They did an amazing job today. I mean, we had the-
Just today, Deb.
There, and there were 230, 200, we lost count at 250. All these kids are putting in all the surveys. I mean, it was amazing how much work they did over there, so it was a good job. Of course, the top things was pizza, McDonald's, Wendy's.
Taco Bell.
Good choice.
And Gordon-
It was the biggest thing at the high school.
And Gordon, Taco Bell. T-A-C-O-W. Taco Bell.
Close.
Some of the other things were amazing. They wanted sushi.
We love that. I said, bring it to Gordon.
The middle school?
Middle school wanted sushi. Fried octopus. I mean, some of the things were crazy. Overall, it was amazing. It really was. So the survey was really, really good. I think the program's doing really well. I've got great staff. I give it to a lot of any of them. My door's always open, emails. We try to accommodate the kids as best we can. If parents need something, we ask that they email us, and we will do the best we can, so.
Deb, how do you, from your perspective, and you reflect back on the year, the program, whatever, what are you looking for that you would say, okay, you feel good about the program? This is successful. What are the key attributes that you, you look for yourself?
I would have to say the people that I work with, my staff, the people, the people that above me, the people that lead me, you, you can't be where you are today without the people around you. I know when I go to other conferences, they're always struggling because of your administration. You can't move without your administration, and that has been a key thing for me. I'm able to do what I can from my administration. They allow me to move, and if you can't move, your program doesn't move. So that's been the biggest thing for me.
Great. Thank you very much.
And you make a really good tuna fish sandwich, so.
She always feeds us well.
Yes, she does feed us well. And I don't know who's paying for this caviar though tonight, but I see caviar over there.
I don't think.
No, what was it? It's the olive topping.
Oh, yeah.
Looks like, it looks like caviar.
Thank you very much.
Deb, can you just-
Great job.
Deb, I don't know, September, October, it was brought up that when we changed from, 'cause we had some kids that were buying snacks before their lunch, we changed that on the lines.
Okay.
Correct?
Okay.
Correct?
Negative emails, yep, and the balances. So, we're currently at four thousand dollars. And, so, we've changed the policy. Before, it was a cap, it was ten dollars. So, now, there's no cap on it anymore. The kids sort of, kind of figured out that, hey, we can charge lunch, and we can bring cash in, and still buy snacks. So, that's what was happening. Never in the past could you ever charge snacks. I think there was a misconception of like, oh, the negative balances was from the snacks. It's never been that way. It's always from charging meals. So, the balance is getting higher and higher. It's never been like that. We always, at the end of the year, we always had maybe a two-thousand-dollar balance, but we're midstream, and we're at four thousand dollars. So, you know, I know you had discussed before that there's no snacks, there's no water, there's no second meals. We're up to four thousand five hundred now. So, it's still climbing.
And we had the assistant principals call homes, call parents. You know, we really don't want to get to that next level of having a letter sent from my office, and then, if it doesn't get cleared up, then it would go to the town. We have talked about it. John and I are in discussion with Debbie how to tackle this, and how we'll do it at the end of the school year.
Just, excuse me, for the record, the My School Bucks app is fantastic, because I get to monitor my kids' purchases. My kid is rotten. He wants Doritos five days a week, and that's what he was doing. We didn't realize it until I got the My School Bucks app. And then, I started watching him, and I said, "You get to do this one time per week," you know, "and that's it." And then, once he realized that I knew what he was doing, he said, "Oh, okay." It wasn't worth the fight anymore, so he does it one time per week, but you get to monitor it.
Their whole grain.
Right. But, if some, a parent calls, then we can put something on their account that says only one pack, you know, snack, or, you know, twice a week. I mean, we can do that here at the office, too. I don't even think it's about that. I think what happens is that these kids that buy the snacks, they just want, you know what I mean? They want the snacks, and they charge it, and they have the money, at the high school level. I mean, it's not controlled...
Yeah, mine's in third grade.
Right. So, at the high school level, they have...
I can still control them, not much longer.
Right. They have their own money, and they're getting the snacks, and they just, they know how to do it, because the machines are out on the calf, so it's different. It's not like they're going through the line, and they can't purchase them there. They can say, "Oh, I forgot my money. I'm going to go charge a lunch," and then, the snack machine's over there, so they can go get the snacks over there. So, that's how it is at the high school, so they...
We have a young entrepreneur class. They're entrepreneurs, thinking.
Exactly.
They're thinking.
So, because we have to always provide a meal. So, it's that catch-twenty-two, what you're going to do there, so...
We also know that if parents, Debbie's been very good at this, that if parents have lost their job throughout the year, or felt embarrassed to fill out paperwork in any way, shape, or form, we just, we encourage them, encourage everyone, to call Deb Vaughn's office. You'll hear from Melanie Lanny, they'll send it to you in the mail if you just send it back. You don't have to come in, there's no, it doesn't come up, denied, you know. When I was, a long time ago, when the kids put their numbers in, probably didn't do it at Central, but as a high school principal, kid would put a number in, and it would say, "Denied," or, "Free and reduced," you're free, you know, the kid would remember. Deb, you've been around. They put, they, they would push enter, and it would say, "Free," or, "Reduced." We got rid of that stigma. But, there isn't any of that anymore. And if any parent needs to call, just call. There's help available, we're going to support it. Just let us know what the issue is. And Deb can handle that.
Right.
It is not a peanut butter and jelly sandwich.
Nope.
It's a lunch.
It's a full meal.
It's a full lunch. Yep. We decided that a long time ago. Yeah, it's not peanut butter and fluff.
We're peanut-free. We're peanut-free.
Oh, that's right. Sorry about that.
Peanut-free.
It's sun butter.
Maybe on a go-forward basis, Deb, you could put up instructions how to properly spell taco, would help me a lot.
Hey, it's across the board, you've got two schools on that. It's pretty good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deb.
You're welcome.
Next up, we have Lisa Verasso, pre-K to six, Student Activities Director, and she's going to be discussing the before and after care program. Welcome.
Good evening. Hi, everybody. Hi. Okay, so, you would want me just to discuss, so I kind of wrote everything down, so if anybody has any questions, feel free to interrupt me, or I'll be happy to answer any questions after the fact. So, for anybody that's unaware, I came into this position on September first, 2017. Okay, so, we currently have two-hundred-and-ninety-one students enrolled in our before and after care program. That is up significantly from last year. The grades range from pre-K through grade eight. We do currently have seven students that come over, they take the bus over, they're in seventh and eighth grade, they take the bus over to the middle school, and that's where they're based. Aftercare only, obviously, not before care. I currently have thirty-two staff members working the before and after care program. The ratio at the present time is on average of one adult to ten children. Most days, it's basically one adult to eight to nine children. We are revolving accounts, and our pricing is as follows. For my pre-K to grade-two students, we are eight dollars per day for our morning session, which breaks down to four dollars an hour. We're ten dollars per day for our PM session, which is a breakdown to three dollars and seven cents per session, per hour, I'm sorry. And we're nineteen dollars for half-days, which is three dollars and four cents per hour. My grades, three to six, we are seven dollars per day for our AM session, which is five dollars and eighteen cents an hour. Eleven dollars per day for my PM session, which is three dollars and fourteen cents an hour. And we are twenty-one dollars for the half-day, which is three dollars and twenty-three cents an hour. Let's see. The hours for the half-day, well, for example, is six forty-five, oh, hours that we're open at six forty-five AM until six PM, Monday through Friday. I requested several working parents. We were opening at seven o'clock. That was not working for some of the parents, so we did open it this year to six forty-five AM for those parents. Now, snacks for all students in the aftercare program are included in the price that I just mentioned, the three-dollar range. Children are allowed one healthy snack a day, which is basically cheese sticks, fresh fruit, yogurt, Dole diced fruit, baby carrots, for an example. They're also allowed what we call like a not-so-healthy snack, such as pirate booties, low-sugar cereal, any of the cereal that I do order is all low-sugar. Let's see, pudding, baked chips, Cheez-Its, Rice Krispy treats, things like that. They're allowed one juice a day. We don't want anyone going home on sugar highs. And they're also allowed unlimited water and milk. Okay, so, the reason that, I know there were questions about the before and after care breakfast. The reason why we had to discontinue the before and after care breakfast, we, it was moved under the umbrella of the National School Lunch Program, and it was to ensure that all policies and procedures are being met. Unfortunately, the before and after care program did not have the resources to be compliant for food safety. Basically saying, when it was done, when it was served before, it just wasn't compliant, and it wasn't as safe it should have been for the kids. So, that's why it moved over to this. We offer services for school breaks, PDD days, and summer breaks, at a cost of forty-four dollars a day. This charges for the hours of seven AM to six PM. With this is breakfast and two snacks, a morning snack and an afternoon snack, and unlimited beverages of water or milk throughout the day, again, one juice. If a child is like super hungry during the day, we never turn them down for another snack if they want another snack. We lead them towards a healthy snack. So, if, say, they need a third snack during the day, we do have some kids that have low blood sugar, or they'll start to get a little tired, or grumpy, or something like that, we know they need a snack, we will gear them towards a healthy snack, if that's the case. These prices, none of these prices have increased since coming into my position, and I have absolutely no plans to increase it next year. So, included also in that forty-four-dollar pricing, we offer numerous field trips, pizza parties, ice cream sundae parties, entertainment brought into the school, and many arts and crafts and themed parties that we think students will enjoy. For example, February vacation, Monday is a holiday. Tuesday, we're doing an ice cream sundae party. Who can make the most wildest ice cream sundae? That's Tuesday. Wednesday, we are doing, oh, Arts and Crafts Day. I just bought Marina Arts and Crafts for the kids, they can do all winter-themed, about the weaving looms. Remember the pot holders that we all used to make when we were little? We're bringing that back. Really huge into bringing back, because that's what they seem to love. Thursday, we are going to the East Bridgewater Cinema. We're going to go see Lego Two, and each child will be provided with a kiddy pack, which is popcorn, gummy bears, the right gummy bears, which you assumed, oh, yeah, and a drink. And my staff-to-student ratio for that is, I have five staff members going with sixteen kids.
You may have six going. You have gummy bears. Is that Wednesday?
Oh, that's, I'm sorry, that, so Wednesday, so Tuesday's Ice Cream Sundae Day, Wednesday is the Arts and Crafts Day, Thursday is the movie, and Friday is Pizza Day. So, I emailed all the parents of the kids that are coming Friday, said, "Send me your child, what your favorite, your child's favorite pizza is." Pretty much pepperoni is the big one right now, cheese and everything, and then, we'll be doing a big pizza party, probably ending it...
I want to go to that program.
Yeah, so, this is all included in the forty-four dollars, with the breakfast, the two snacks, three if they need it, and seven to six.
Taco Bell was very, it was very high on that category.
That will not be served in my program, so...
Oh.
No, their parents can take them.
Just put a tomato on those tacos.
Yeah, I was just, yeah, exactly, but not from Taco Bell.
Don't worry, Gordon.
Listen, I, my middle son is addicted to Taco Bell, so I'm not saying, but I'm just not, yeah. From the minute they walk through the door until the minute they leave, I want them to feel that the before and after care is not a place where they have to go, but a place where they want to go. I'm very proud when I say this year, that I've had several families sign their children up for my program for simply social. They're there not because they have to be, their parents want them to be there for the social, and I'm really proud of that. And a big kudos to my staff, because I have staff that are seniors here, and I have staff that are in their seventies, and they're all ranges, and I have everything from nurturing to the boys that look at the girls, and they're like, "Oh." And the funny one is, the college boys, the girls look at that, and I'm like, "Oh, I want to be you," or, "I want to date you." It's hilarious. So, my staff just, hands down, are just unbelievable. So, let's see. All field trips and programs that happen in the before and after care since me taking over are a hundred percent paid, paid for by the before and after care revolving account. I do not, I do not plan to change this in the near future at all. I believe, if a parent has to work, such as I did, they feel guilty enough leaving their children over like a February vacation, or over the summer, and things like that. Least I can do is not make them feel guilty, and let these kids have fun, and not sit in a room and stare at each other all day. So, that's moving forward. I have no, no, I'm not going to change it. On a typical Monday through Friday week, students get to participate in programs such as Drums Alive. If you have not seen Drums Alive, you honestly should step into my aftercare program someday. Laura Lipinski teaches it. I'm not sure if you are familiar with her. She is amazing with the kids. I just put some pictures up on Facebook and Instagram. You can check out the pictures, or you can go watch other kids. The preschoolers are going crazy over it. Central school is just going nuts. I have to actually add a second day. Art with Mr. Charlin, my Mitchell kids love being pulled from the aftercare. They don't have to go, it's whoever wants to, and he's always doing a different creation with the kids every Wednesday. He takes whoever wants to go. Karaoke. Mrs. Kelm is famous for doing the karaoke, and the kids just, they think it's the best thing in the world. This is all on just what goes on in an average week. On a daily basis, the kids have new movies, games, puzzles, sports equipment such as soccer balls, croquet, which is their absolute favorite. They're already asking them if they can go out and play croquet again. We've gone through two sets, they just can't get enough of it. Ladderball, snowshoes, sleds, bowling, and they have plenty of arts and crafts. The children have the option to learn crocheting. Mrs. McNeil at the Mitchell School, she's a whiz at crocheting, and she's got a table of kids all the time. They're just, she's teaching them how to crochet. They make scarves, they make necklaces, they make everything. If they want to paint nails, we have some people that, you know, they love to paint nails, so they have their nails decorated. They participate in our famous bingo tournaments, so they all get prizes for the bingo tournaments. And it's just a few of the activities that we do on a daily basis, the before and after care program. So, that's where everything kind of stands right now. If anybody has any questions...
I think it sounds great. I'm curious, so like Deb Vaughn had said she has an outstanding balance for food services. Do you have an outstanding balance for...
I do. So, right now, I have sixty-four hundred dollars in outstanding balances. I have tried to collect them. I did meet with Mr. Shea last week. Mr. Shea has now taken over those collections. Letters have gone out, and if, he's given, I think, another letter, maybe going out this week, and then, they'll be turned over to the town. But, for the most part, it's pretty good. When I came in, it was a pretty big debt, so...
Higher than sixty-four?
Higher than that? Oh, without, yeah.
Wow.
Without, oh, a lot, so, but, yeah.
Lisa, can you touch on Little Vikings, real quick, what you've got coming up?
I gotta see my face light up.
Just, just, quick.
Very quick, Little Vikings.
That's a summer program, right?
Little Vikings is our five-week, and this is our fifth-year BNI program. I really kind of don't want to give away too much about it right now.
No, just that...
What do you want to know about it?
That your program's coming out soon, right?
Yep, I was with Rose from Happy Frog Friday. We designed, we put the whole program together. She will be coming back to me with a proof. She's amazing at taking my vision. So, I should be hoping to get a proof from her within the next probably week or so. Catalogues are slated to be going out the week of March eighteenth, if the proof and everything goes okay. There's a lot of surprises in store, fifth year. We have a big entertainment the last day. We have a huge grand prize that we're doing for every week your child comes to Little Vikings, their name is going to, they're going to fill out a little ticket, and there's going to be a big grand prize at the end, but I really want to save that, if you guys don't mind. If you want me to come back after the catalogs go out, I'm willing to go out. But, it's just something that I really want the kids to see and know. I want to see the excitement for them first. That's, that's like my baby, so...
That's great. So, you'll come back in the spring to us?
Yeah, I usually will come back anyways for the sponsors and stuff like that, but if anybody has any questions about Little Vikings, but it's a big year, and it's great.
Huge fan. Both my kids go to Little Vikings.
Oh, thank you. This one has been a year in the making, so I'm super excited.
It's got my daughter into pre-K.
Oh, yeah.
It was like the transition period that got her there.
Good, I'm happy to hear that.
And I loved everything you said. I just had one question about, we talked about, something about being unsafe early on in the conversation?
So I, yes.
And I was just hoping that you could expand a little bit.
Well, I, but, I'd say might have been a wrong word to say, because I can't, I was not here when it, so the person that was here prior to me, the food was brought in. So like, that person would go to whatever, a Costco or BJ's or something like that. So say food temperature. You know what I mean? So like, it wasn't regulated. Here, everything is regulated by the state. It's safe, it's at code. You know what I mean? Like, you can't just, you just can't throw out like a dozen donuts and say, here, go, here's your breakfast, you know what I mean? Like, this is all regulated by the state, where before, it wasn't regulated. You know what I mean? It was like, okay, whatever, they were in the mood to buy. Okay, here's waffles with butter and syrup and, you know what I mean? It, the intention was there, but that, you know what I mean? It wasn't regulated the way it's regulated now with temperatures.
So this is regulated now by DESI? Or is it the?
Deb's program.
Deb's program, okay.
Yeah, Deb's program. It's regulated by, and it's healthier for the kids. So even if the kids are getting.
Sorry, I just hear that word in my.
Yeah, it was probably a wrong word, and I wasn't here at the time. So it was, put it this way, when, when, I'm the only one that can transport if I need to. And I think in a year and a half, I've been here, I've transported a case of chips like once.
Yep.
But when you're transporting food, and you, oh, I might have to stop here, or I have to go, you don't know the temperature of somebody's car, or you don't know, like, you know what I mean? So it's not that it was a bad thing, it just, it wasn't regulated. And it's, it's more safe for the children to have it regulated now.
So we're tracking it better now?
Oh, it's, it's, yeah. So everything comes from food service. Everything comes from food. So every breakfast that is being served is mandated by the state. Like, I, we cannot put anything out if it's not state-approved. Okay? So if they want to put out, even like my, in the afternoon, like, I could order like, like the little packs, the kids like the little pack of the donuts or something like that. They're wholly, they're not like the donuts that you can go buy at like 7-Eleven off the shelf. They're, they're all regulated, I think, so, yeah.
Rob, also, under the previous directorship expiration date, weren't being paid attention to, so there was a lot of waste that was happening because the circulation of storage wasn't being done. I mean, certainly, they didn't have the food service qualifications that the food service department in the district does. So, you know, we put the expertise in the hands of the people who specialize in it.
Right.
And so it allows Lisa.
I'm afraid of the safety, I think.
Right, yeah. And allows Lisa and her team to be able to focus on their expertise, and that's working with the children. And Deb can oversee, making sure that they have the food items that they need, and they're at the quantities they need, and they fulfill all the regulations, and we're not finding that we have a lot of waste.
Mm-hmm. So even when I order my snacks for the kids, my snacks go to Deb. And then Deb and I, like, if we, I have any questions or she has any questions, we're total in collaboration as far as even my snacks. We make sure those snacks are all regulated.
I've just seen a lot of this through the Boys and Girls Club, my work with the Boys and Girls Club, and I just, I know how stringent those, those rules and regulations are. So I think it's great that we're operating under that guideline, but I'm perfectly happy.
Yeah, we have, we're not gonna change that. That's here to stay. Absolutely guaranteed. So, okay. Thank you.
Great job.
Well done.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Jennifer McPartland and Deb Dupre to speak about 1A curriculum and 1B instruction, goes along with our strategic plan, 1A and 1B.
Jenny, you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Hello, thanks for having us tonight.
Thanks for being here.
And happy Valentine's Day, everyone. So Mrs. McPartland and I are going to give you a brief update on curriculum and instruction based on our strategic plan. And we're just going to highlight some of the things that we've done up to this point. This is essentially the mid-year piece of the school year. And so we're going to just tell you what we've been doing at the schools, at the various schools, starting with a curriculum update at Central School. So Jen?
At Central School, right now, they're in the midst of doing their action planning for their grade level writing. By the end of the year, their plan is to have three different writing prompts per term, per grade level, that are common amongst their grade levels, so that they can start to look at trends in student writing and progression of student writing. They have also increased their collaboration time amongst their grade levels. They used to meet, be able to meet monthly as a grade level, and now they have increased that to being able to find time to meet, to meet weekly, to collaborate on all types of curriculum. And Mrs. Byrne has also added breakout sessions to her staff meetings, so that they can share instructional practices and model for each other, and be able to collaborate in another setting.
Great. And now I'll just mention a little bit about the Mitchell School. As you know, we focus quite a bit on writing. So the second term, we focus really on the conferencing part of writing, and how to effectively administer conferences with students around their writing products. So we've looked at some research. We've talked about how to give verbal feedback to kids, and also written feedback. And we're trying to evaluate the effectiveness of that. So some teachers approach it a little bit differently. So we're looking at what the research says, and how effective it is in terms of their first draft to their final draft, and really consolidating what makes a difference. So for the next term, we heard that one of the variables that might make a difference is the actual writing prompt that we administer. So if every grade level is doing a different writing prompt, it's really difficult to compare across the grade levels how much their writing is improved according to the state standards. So we decided for term three, between myself and Mr. Gentile and Mrs. McPartland, we've had a lot of meetings about writing, to try a prompt that the entire school can do at the Mitchell School. And we're, we're going to talk about friendship, and what is a good friend, and describing characteristics. And then what we do is during PLCs, we meet with the staff, and we look at student writing samples, and we talk about how effective their writing is, and looking at, across the board at all the grade levels, and comparing the details, and looking at topic sentences. And I think it will really help us evaluate more effectively the students' writing and how much they've progressed. So we're looking forward to that. We've also promoted writing within the special areas. So at first, it's like, wow, writing in phys ed? How is that going to work? But we've really found some creative ways in which to do that. Kids are explaining how to play bowling after a bowling unit. I was in a class the other day for computers, where they were actually writing in a tech journal about what topics they found difficult during the semester, and what they need more instruction in. So seeing writing in all the special areas has been really rewarding. And again, we're going to come together as a staff and talk about how that went, and what other topics we can write about that's really engaging for the kids. I know in one of the computer classes, they wrote about Fortnite and Minecraft, and they love those games. So they were so engaged and enthralled in their writing activity, which is what we want to see. We've also focused on fit money training, and that program has to do with financial literacy. And last year, we piloted that program in grades four and five. Now we're doing it in three, four, five, and six. Our teachers have been trained in it. They actually went through a whole-day training on January eleventh, and now they're ready to implement the lessons for the first time, some of our grade levels. They've decided this year to implement them after MCAS is over, and they're going to try them out, test them out. But as we're looking at Ready Math, which is our new math program, they're really looking at where can these lessons fit in appropriately in the new math curriculum. What's exciting is it really talks about things like credit, debit, insurance, things that kids maybe don't have a lot of information about. Like with a credit card, a lot of our younger kids, you have third-grade students, may not even understand that. Eventually, you have to pay that off. It's not like, wow, I can just pass this through and I don't have to pay for it. So just topics like that are going to be so important for the financial literacy of our students. I wish they had something like that when I was in school as well. I think it's very valuable, real-world skills. Then we're also going to focus on, I know Dr. Williams probably, coming up in the future, will talk a little bit more about UDL and the UDL Academy that a lot of the staff has been attending. So Universal Design for Learning really focuses on choices and options, and removing barriers for students. So we're really looking at the Mitchell School at, how can we offer more opportunities for kids to present different ways to demonstrate learning? So for example, if they're learning fractions in math, rather than taking just a written test, maybe a kid can do a poster. Maybe a child can do some Google Slides. Maybe kids can demonstrate their understanding of fractions through a writing piece. So really looking at choice boards and giving kids options. And as an evaluator, I have been really heightened in all the classrooms that I've been going into, and really paying attention to, are we offering choices to our students? And what kinds of choices are we giving kids in order to demonstrate their learning? Because everyone learns differently, and they can demonstrate their knowledge in different ways. And then the last thing I just want to mention here is, it's been so exciting to see the cross-building collaboration. I know since the superintendent has come on board, she has really talked about unifying the district as one. So the other day, we had an opportunity with a high school teacher, Mr. Silver, and Ms. Principi, who is a teacher in fourth grade in my building. And they were collaborating about some of the science topics that they teach, and decided to do a project where the high school students in science were doing videos on plate tectonics, and they were talking about divergent plates and convergent plates. And they actually demonstrated it with graham crackers, so that the children could understand. And then Ms. Principi's students watched the videos, and they actually evaluated the high school students' videos, and they were so excited. They were like, wow, we get to grade high school students. That's awesome. So just to see that collaboration going on, and I know Mr. Gentile and myself are really trying to promote that, and with the help of Mrs. McPartland as our curriculum coordinator, looking at what everyone is doing, and how we can bring it all together as a unified system, has been very exciting.
All right. At the high school right now, they are knee-deep in curriculum mapping. That's something that they have undertaken this year. And so over the course of the year, they are looking at essential questions, making sure that their planning is objective-driven, student-centered classrooms, a lot of these, you know, student choice. A lot of more classrooms where teachers are more of a facilitator, rather than just a director of the learning. So we, as the high school group gets together, they're gonna be looking on student engagement, making sure that, you know, high school students sometimes can be hard to hook. So they're gonna be looking at ways to engage students into their learning. And Mr. Duffy, I'm speaking with him, he wanted to give a shout-out about the integration of tech tools at the high school, as a thanks to Erin Fisher. All right. As for MAP, this is, this was a perfect time to have a meeting right now, because our winter testing closed on February first. So this is probably the most informative time for our teachers, because it allows them to check in mid-year, see where the students are at, what adjustments need to be made. Our district goal right now is about student growth. Because if students are growing, then they are achieving. The achievement also is ultimately impacted. So at the Central School, Mrs. Byrne and the reading specialists are having individual meetings with teachers, because they can look at their MAP data, they can look at their devils literacy data, their math and reading assessments, because they have those self-contained classrooms. So they're able to then take that information and then collaboratively make a plan moving forward. What needs to be adjusted? What students should we be, you know, targeting? How can we challenge other students? So those meetings, I believe, just probably finished up, because I know they were taking place right after testing finished. At Mitchell School?
Great. And at the Mitchell School, again, we're very fortunate to have Mrs. McPartland on board with us, and Mrs. Fisher, as we rotate through doing PLCs with our teachers, really educating them about MAP data, the MAP program, and all of our technology tools that are available. We focused this past week on PLCs with MAP growth, as Mrs. McPartland has said, and just having teachers look at the data and looking at ways that we, we can improve. And one of the things that we had talked about, now that teachers have become more familiar with all the different reports that are available, because initially, it can be overwhelming. There's a lot of information there. Mrs. McPartland has helped us really hone in on what is valuable to really direct instruction, and where we can focus on different skills and topics with kids that are ready for, to learn. And now we're starting to have our teachers feel very comfortable with having conferences and meetings with individual students. So I know it started with one of our sixth-grade teachers, who reached out and said, I really want to tell these students how they're doing. I want my kids to know, I want them to see their growth from fall to winter, and where they need to go in the spring, and set some goals on how to get there. Now, I know Mrs. McPartland, with this sixth-grade teacher, had modeled how to do that, and they had worked together, and now it's kind of spread like wildfire. All these teachers want to do this, they want to tell their kids about the data. And they were very honest in their meetings. Some of the kids would say things like, oh, I know I rushed through, and I know that MAP wants me to get here, I think I could take my time a little bit more, or maybe I need to really read the questions very carefully and focus on what they're asking me to do. So just having kids be reflective about how they can improve. And it also puts the onus back on them to set some goals, and to say that MAP data is important, and we're looking at this. And this is something that you need to do your best and try your best on, because it's going to drive our instruction as we move forward.
The junior, senior high school is also having similar conversations with their students about setting goals for themselves. They were having a little bit of difficulty getting the students engaged and really taking it seriously. And so seventh and eighth grade actually decided that they were going to have a competition by homeroom, and it was based completely on student growth. Not so much on who can get the highest score, the, we don't talk about that. We talk about individual growth. Because the best thing about MAP is that you are only compared to kids like yourself. MAP will make a projection and say, we hope you can grow by this much, because other kids like you tend to grow that much. So they took homerooms, which were mixes of kids, and they had a competition. And at the end, the winning homerooms, one grade level did a pizza party, and the other grade level did a breakfast. So, and the growth was through the roof. So we're hoping to continue that momentum, and also, they're having these conversations now with students to say, this is really important. Not only does it inform the teachers, but it gives them something to strive for. At the department level, at the, especially like, you know, the math department and the ELA department, you have multiple teachers sometimes teaching the same course. So this is great for collaborative conversations, where you might have three or four teachers who are all teaching Algebra II. Well, we can look at all the growth in those classrooms, and they can really collaborate and say, what are you doing to get that growth? Or what could I change in my practice? Or what do we need to change in, with our materials and our assessments? So it's allowing for those types of conversations to happen at the upper levels as well.
When will that MAP data become available for people to see?
The MAP data, we send home at the end of every, at the end of every year. It goes home with the, with the report card.
It's not like we won't see it during parent-teacher conferences.
You can ask for it. Yep, yep, you can ask to see it during that, yep. The mid-year point is especially, is mainly for teachers, because that's what's going to inform their instruction for the rest of the year, but the data is available. Yep.
Thank you.
All right. And finally, we have this, our curriculum review cycle, which is our six-year cycle. Right now, we are in that wellness, social, emotional learning, and we are currently looking at all of the curriculums. It's a really complex topic to look at, because you have health, physical education, you have the guidance department, you have a lot of people involved in this topic. So we're looking at streamlining the curriculum. What do we have already for materials? What do we have, what type of instruction do we have going on at the different grade levels? And also, what community resources are we tapping into? And where do they fit into the different parts of the, of the program? Luckily, we have two staff members who applied to be on the comprehensive health framework review panel, and were accepted. So we have Michelle Amrott, who's a health teacher at Central School, and Sarah Moore, who's a guidance counselor here at the junior, senior. And as being members of this framework review panel, they are offering their input into the new frameworks, which haven't been revised for twenty years. So you could imagine the changes that have taken place just hearing that. You know, even the vaping conversation earlier, the changes that need to take place within that framework. It hadn't been revised since ninety-nine. So they, right now, are part of a panel. I think they met, they met two or three times already with the state, and they have meetings throughout the spring. And then gives them firsthand insight into the new frameworks, which look, look like they'll be out for public comment over the summer. And so that is really helping to drive our work here in combining all of these frameworks together. For, oh, you wanted to mention something about Safety Care, too.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that we subscribe to Safety Care, which is really a program where about sixty of our staff members currently are trained. And we have trainers in the district as well, I'm one of the trainers. And really what it is, is a behavioral program that focuses on proactive approaches, on how to teach pro-social behaviors to students. And it really works on de-escalating students if they're starting to demonstrate aggression or any kind of challenging or dangerous behavior. And it really focuses on replacing those behaviors with something that is more productive. So it's been a quality program. Again, we're looking at training those teachers that need to be trained or teaching assistants. And they have implemented a lot of strategies on a daily basis, which has really prevented a lot of crises from happening when a child is maybe frustrated or agitated. So it really talks about what we can do as professionals to even control our own actions and interactions with children.
All right. And just to peek for next year, the review for next year will be history and social science. The framework was voted on last July, so it is in effect right now. And we are looking at already, where are the shifts in the content? What, what things are moving from one grade level to another? And our teachers are already having those cross-grade and cross-building conversations. As part of that, too, is that we're gonna be on the hunt. It's also one of those frameworks that has not been revised in however many years. So we will, I've already got conversations going with multiple vendors about resources that are gonna be coming available to align to the new curriculum, and what's gonna be out there. So, and DESI has also offered some info sessions around the state. I attended one a few months ago, and then members from this building and Mitchell School also have gone, so they can start to hear the shifts. One of my biggest takeaways from that was that our students are no longer going to be heavily focused on memorization and what facts can you spit back. It's gonna be more about what can you do with them. So everything is gonna be about application. So no, it's not gonna be identify on a map, or, you know, tell me the dates of this. It's more gonna be about looking at big-picture items. So it's gonna be a shift not only in the topics that are taught in our different grade levels, but also in the way we teach things. So that's gonna be part of the review process next year, and that's why we're already kind of dabbling in it right now.
What about with the state? They, they were gonna come out and say that for whatever grade, they had to do a civics project? So that might be part of this new?
Yep, it's part of the new one. They're saying there is going to be a civics project. I haven't gotten the clarification on whether or not, being a junior, senior high school, if you have to have one in seventh and eighth grade and one at the high school level, or if because we're one building, it would be one. But there is going to be a civics project requirement for graduating.
That might not come out till, I know they talked about it. I thought that they had, DESI had decided upon something, but...
At the, when I was at the info session, they skirted around the topic a little bit, yeah. Everybody wanted to know, but they squirted, they didn't quite answer that question, and they didn't quite answer the question about whether there's going to be an assessment or what it would look like.
They did that at conference, too. They kind of just didn't really answer the question.
They made it sound like there would be some sort of assessment, because there is somebody dedicated to the assessment development process for history and social science. But they did mention that it's not necessarily going to be super content-based. It's not going to be the type of, you know, like I said, you're recalling facts or dates. It's going to be more about, let's say, taking a document and analyzing a doc. Are you able to analyze a primary source? It's going to be really about your application of skills to something that you're given, something that you would actually be doing in real life later on. So, but they have not, they will not say yet what that's going to look like.
Thank you.
To be...
To be continued.
To be continued. Excellent. All right.
Thank you, that was very informative.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Switch over there.
Next up, we have Erin Fisher. Next up, we have Erin Fisher. She's going to talk to us about technology, and this corresponds with Strategic Plan Number Four.
Thank you.
Welcome.
So just a quick update on technology. In both central and middle school, once a month, I meet with the staff, and we have a professional learning community, and I usually align it. I follow up after Mrs. McPartlin and try to align with what she's doing. So if it's writing, then I look at tools with the staff. It can be geared towards writing. If it's on diversity of assessment, we look at different tools that we can use with assessment. And these have been very highly received. They look a little different between the buildings, based on the population, but it's very, it's my favorite meeting of the month, aside from one other committee I'm on. Besides PD Academy. It's, I really love the PLCs that we do, and it's just a great, a great time. At the junior, senior high school, because of the scheduling, it's a little more difficult for me to do those, because they don't all have a common, they don't have as often a common planning time. So Mr. Duffy and myself have spoken, and I'm going to start attending their staff meetings and presenting a quick tech tool during their staff meetings, and then following up later in the month during their CPT time, but only briefly, because they're using that time to work on curriculum. So that's going to happen there. And then I also have plenty of teacher appointments. My calendar is available, and teachers regularly sign up with me. And sometimes it's during their planning time to give them different professional development, and other times, it's during class time, and I'm in with students and facilitating the lesson with the technology. So I'm in both of those roles. And then I've also, this past month, been heavily working on our Professional Development Day, which is our Technology PD Day that's coming up. So our Annual Technology PD Day, which is the Monday following for revocation, this is like my baby. We have 38 workshops being offered and 30 of our own staff presenting. This is like a record number of our own staff presenting. I cannot wait. Watch us on Twitter. I'm going to encourage everyone to tweet it. We have some amazing staff members that I'm like, over the moon proud of. They text me all the time, and they're even being sought out now by other schools to come present at other school districts. So it's, they're just, the teachers here are doing such a great job embracing technology and pushing it out to our staff. We have six outside presenters, friends of mine, that, tech directors from other schools, tech integrators from other schools, that we kind of do each other a favor, and they'll come here and present a workshop. I might present a workshop for them, and they're very knowledgeable as well. And you can see our workshops that are being offered. We have, that's only just a small smattering of our options there, but we have choice boards and Google applications and Makerspace activities, iPads in the classroom, assistive technology, hyperdocs, infographics, harnessing social media, overcoming barriers to learning, thinking outside the docs. I love that one. So we have a lot of, and none of those are mine. Those are all the other staff members. So they're really well-versed in the technology, and that's through, some of it's through working with me, and some of it's what they take on with their own initiatives. And this day has been such a success, this is, I believe, our fourth or fifth year with this day, that I'm going to present on our Digital Day at the MALEEDS Leadership Conference in March, that's hosted through Massachusetts Association of Curriculum and Development and MasQ, on how we organize this day, because other districts are looking to do a day similar to this. So it goes off really well.
Can school committee members pay to attend these? That sounds great.
Yeah. I'll email you the schedule. It's awesome.
Looks fantastic.
It's such an amazing day. It's so awesome. So from my teacher appointments and just tweeting and doing my blog every week and putting out different tools, recently, Sarah Trainer, she's grade seven in science, she and I met, and she had this beautiful assessment, the kids took culminating life science and procaria and eucaria and defining whether something's a living being. They had to make a PSA for zombies, how to identify if it's a zombie. So she gave them like, all different options, and I went and met with her, and we talked about those options, and she gathered some from my blog that I put out, and then we met and discussed it. It went off, and she said it was one of the best lessons. So that's some of her examples there that she did with her kids. And then, if you can go on to the next one, you don't have to, they did like podcasts and videos and infographics. And then Amy Monae this month, to follow up with writing and how we're putting some of the technology in writing. It's hard to read that, but she's using this great tool called Wakelet. And it was a tool that I kind of showed her and then also tweeted it out, and then she's been working with it and having me in to see what the kids are doing. You can click it. And basically, it's a collaborative space, and she has the kids, they're doing their argumentative writing, and they're having to provide evidence with an Edgar Allan Poe story. And you can scroll down, and the kids post their work here, and they can all see each others, and they're posting text and video and pictures of their persuasive. So she's giving them all different, you can stay on that one, all different ways to show their knowledge, but they're all putting it in this one common place, and they can all see each other's work. So she's doing a really nice job with that. If you go back to my slide, you can click her other one. And this is another one where she had kids pull quotes from the text to provide contextual evidence to support a claim. They had to pretend they were attorneys. And so all the kids are writing on here, and they're using all their quotes from different pieces of the passage and citing the page numbers. And the kids are really enjoying it, and they can all see each other's work in this collaborative space. And then also, to go with the writing, you can go back to the slide. Thanks, Jen. Going back to sixth grade, these teachers, you can see, I emailed them, and I'm like, can I show that awesome thing you're doing? And so these are their emails back to me, and they get all excited, of course! So Laura McPhee, grade six teacher, has been doing a writing lesson, and she's using a tool, and she's going to present it on a Tech PD Day, called Google Jamboard. And basically, it's an app that's on the student Chromebooks, and it's on the board, and it's basically like a whiteboard. And the kids can all put their Fred or Saymore, that's some of the language in our writing program. And what she did is, she had a code to the Jamboard, so only if their thought was really worthy of the Jamboard, would they get the code. And then when it was real, they thought it was really good enough, they'd call her over, and she'd give them the secret code, and then they could put it on this board. And then from there, she could stretch them and make them bigger or smaller, so all the kids could see it, so they could really evaluate the writing and see like, what flowed in this science open response. And she was saying to me today, because I said, I'm going to show it at school committee, and she said, be sure to tell them, like, this is something that, when we used to do it before technology, like, we'd all be writing, and I'd have to run around, and I'd have to take one and put it up on an overhead, and it would just be so time-consuming to get that feedback that now you're getting in such a, you know, flow in a more efficient manner. So that's how we're supporting writing with technology, and that's what we're up to.
Wow, that's amazing.
Thank you.
Amazing, right. That's exactly the right word.
Yeah.
The kids, the kids and the teachers are really amazing. It's just incredible. I'm so thankful to be a part of it. It's really great.
How do they go about finding these apps? So you tell them some of them, but then they find some on their own.
They do. So Jam, Google Jamboard I did at a PLC, and Wakelet I also did at one of our PLCs. And then when I find a really good tool, I'll run to some of the teachers that I know are great catalysts to spread it, and I'll ask them if I can come in and work with them. And then sometimes they'll be working, like Sarah Trainer was working on a choice board she wanted, and she read posts that I had and took some of my tools and booked me to come in, and then she found a tool that she put on there, just from, she went out to like Plymouth Public Schools and found something through them. And so I went and researched the tool and texted one of my tech director friends and was like, is this, is this a safe tool to use? So made sure it was, you know, a good tool, and it was. So she taught me a tool. It was great.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice job, Erin. Nice job, Jen. Nice job, Deb.
Rob, thank you for spending Valentine's Day with us.
Yes. Now go home and see your kids before they go to bed. Not you, Deb, you're still here. Just kidding.
If the superintendent doesn't have anything else, I will make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved?
Moved by Gordon.
Second.
Second by Hazel. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Happy Valentine's Day.
Valentine's Day, what's left of it.
Rob, did you sign all of these?
I signed one of them twice.